I can't.
So, two items under my report. Just a reminder that in November, you put on your radar, election day falls on our board meeting, and so we will shift the election day, we'll shift our meeting to Bethel. Wish we could shift the election day. We'll shift our meeting to Bethel. Last time we were at DB, and so we will shift that to Bethel, same time, same bad channel. The other thing I just want to recognize is, it just mentioned, I'm sure you've seen the news where there was a situation at Scoopall Valley yesterday, and that there was some threats this morning, that then prompted Scoopall Valley to be closed today. But I just want to recognize, especially with our security chief, Chris here, I just want to recognize our law enforcement in our community and the work that Chris does in our buildings on a consistent basis, going around, checking doors, making sure that connections are made with kids. We have a presence. It's not unusual through his connections to be able to have state police presence on our campus and coming through. All the connections associated with Burnville Police that he works with, Tobahawk and Police having a great presence in our building, the connections with Bethel, you know Officer Arnold a lot of times is walking through and coming through our buildings at Bethel and stopping along with some of the other officers. We really are fortunate to have the coverage, to have those connections, and a lot of it is owed both to our relationship when Chris was the chief, and now with Brian being there, we are slated. PSBA created what they're calling Penn SSI. It is a whole simulation. What would you describe it as, Chris?
From everything from, I would say administrative assistant, to custodial, to cafeteria. It's a virtual academy you go to. It's the only one in the United States. You go down there, we did a lot of, I think, we took a team of 12, we're looking at taking another team of 12 staff members there, October 29th. It is a virtual, if you ever see the kids wearing the virtual goggles and playing games, this is without the goggles, you're walking down the hallway, lockers, you name it. You actually have to use a handgun during there, which is provided by the Safe School Institute. So, it is so lifelike, I think. The staff, I think Mr. Gears went, Ms. Parsons, Taylor Charles went, Dr. Metznig went, and we're looking at taking another team in October. So it is something that you learn from. We're also taking, I think, at least five local police departments, we're thinking there also. So, it's just, you can't get more lifelike than going to this center. I think everybody enjoyed it and learned a bunch of things that went the first time, so I look at it as a great experience.
So it's an entire environment. Basically what they do is they took an office building, they recreated a whole school environment, or makeshift school, classrooms, hallways, all that, kind of to simulate anything from de-escalation, an angry parent, to there is a weapon on campus and you have to escalate that, or de-escalate that situation. We've been fortunate, we took over the summer, staff that were currently, all our secretaries, administrative team that was available in the summer, as Chris mentioned, we're taking another team with some counselors and some of the admin that didn't go. But, one of the nice things is, we are taking all of Tobahawk and Township. They made a command into us that they're going to send all of their officers to this training, so that they are well versed in the de-escalation practices. So, it is nice. I know a couple years ago, we made that jump to bring Chris on board, but I think it has paid off tremendously. You know, his presence along with the partnerships that we have has been in back. So thank you for making that mess.
Thank you.
And that would end my report.
Got him some Eagles tickets.
Do this right.
And those Eagles tickets for that, or from the speeding tickets that he had prior?
Only if they're playing the Cowboys.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
I've said it many times before, if you have a gift, you may have missed recalling a little bit, working with kids, but I guess it's about the work with kids and law enforcement.
Oh, absolutely.
But you do have a gift. I look forward to seeing you in your Santa outfit this year.
Yeah, I hope to know another one. I guess Kaufman's, they had me doing it because somebody told them that I do it at Ben Berka. I do it at Kaufman's now, too.
He doesn't even need the pillow that comes with it.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board this evening pertaining to agenda items only? Seeing none, moving on to finance. Mr. Hat.
Okay, so we had the per capita tax discussion. Okay, I'm passing around just some bullet points as far as discussion items. I'd like to just point out, this is a preliminary discussion. After this discussion, if it's decided, I don't want to pursue this, I will talk to tax collectors, municipalities, anybody who hasn't talked to, haven't talked to them about it this time, I gave a lap. We did this in 2018, we had talked about this, I presented it, and it was dismissed by the board, and one of the reasons was, this is the only tax that the renters pay. So, that really doesn't, doesn't really hold true, because we don't know who the renters are in the district. The municipalities don't have any way to track it. So, we don't know if a renter moves in or moves out. So, but that was the reason, so all the work that was done was dismissed. It's come up, it's come back again, the board member, some people have called me, I've received calls from taxpayers about collection, collection agency things. GH Harris and our election agency, they are, we submit all of delinquent per capita to them, we let them collect it. They add fees, you know, it's a $10, it's a $15 bill, $10 goes to us, and $5 goes to municipality. But when they get it, they put their fees on it. I'm not sure what they are, but they're certainly a lot more than $15. So, we got some nasty calls about it. Again, it's kind of called a nuisance tax, it's $15, we get $10, and the municipality gets $5. So, I bring this up because, you know, it's seven, it's, we receive roughly $7,100 in revenue, and expenses are, to us, are about $12,000. So, we net about $58,000 per capita tax, $58,100 per capita tax, current year, but then we also collect delinquent. GH Harris collects delinquent, that's another $10,000 a year. So we get about $69,000 a year net of the expenses. So, eliminating that tax, that's what we'll be eliminating as far as our revenue costs. It's just a discussion item. So, I'll just go through the bullet points that I have here. We are responsible, districts are responsible for maintaining the census information. We pay BCIU for the Tax Trax program. We maintain, we have to update, as we, as we know, the step reports, the information we get from the, from the Department of Economic Development and the county on property transfers. We look at that information, we change everything in the census with the new owners, we do that. So, the homeowners were pretty confident we're okay on, as far as an accurate database. The, the other way we track is, we actually look at the newspaper every day. We look for births, and we look for deaths. We add the newborns, if they're born in Burnville or born in the district, we add them. Another reason is for kindergarten plans, that's why we do that. But, and deaths, the last we want to do is send a per capita tax to somebody who just died. It just causes a lot of problems. So, that's stuff that Jenny Gardula does on a daily basis. So that's, that's our responsibility. The municipalities do none of that. So we purchase the software, we build the municipalities for their share of it. Our tax collectors get paid $1 per capita bill collected. Municipalities don't have any way to track the renters, they don't give us any information on that, we don't, they don't have a numerator, I think they used to call it, they used to have somebody that was hired to do that, but they don't do that, do it anymore. Back in 18, we tried this, we went as far as meeting with the municipalities and giving them their options. If we eliminate our tax, can they collect it on their own? I never really got an answer from them, what they would do. They could simply say, well, we'll eliminate it too. They would, their revenue for your municipalities is about $30,000, split between the five municipalities. The other part of that is, if we eliminate our tax, the, we have a, we have two parts of the per capita tax. It's an Act 679 tax and an Act 511 tax. If we eliminate our Act 511 tax, municipality may pick that up. They can, they can choose to tax an additional $5, $5 per person. So that would double their income on their end, but they would have to wait to have a way to collect it. Burke CMT would be able to collect it, or they can use the BCIU Tax Trax like we do, but they would have to maintain the census information, which I'm not sure that we're equipped to do. But that would be just something that I would have to provide information to them, to give them their options, like I did before. There's some things we have to do. We have to advertise in the newspaper for three weeks and have a board resolution. We have to notify the election board by February of '25, because next year is a tax collector election year, and if we're changing compensation for tax collectors, they need to know about it. Tax collector compensation hasn't changed in many, many years. Currently, it's $2 for a real estate bill and $1 for a per capita bill. So...
So, what you're gonna end up doing is you're gonna request a per-real estate good, or product worth?
Right. And I would recommend that, yeah.
What does it cost us to do what we're gonna do there? I mean, you're still gonna track births?
We would track births, that's it. That's all we would do, would track deaths. We wouldn't have to constantly update the system. We do it to update the real estate bill.
If you had a guess, tracking stuff in the newspaper reminds me of like 1990, what year is it?
If you had a guess, how much time does Jen spend on this every day? So like, the first thing she does comes in the morning, it's 10 minutes, an hour?
Yeah, that is 15 minutes at tops a day. But that's, and most days it's nothing, okay? The rest that she has to do is, you know, she has to deal with the collections and post of, post of revenue when we get it. That's cyclical, too, that's, you know, during the tax season. I, we had estimated before, probably about, total of $8,000 for her salary, which doesn't, is not included in that, would be per time. But she still has the real estate, that's, they kind of go together.
What's the software?
Software is...
You could just eliminate all real estate taxes and per capita taxes.
Yeah. Okay. Billing costs, basically it's $10,000. $10,000 is the Tax Trax, and printing the bills, and the handling the bills, mailing the bills.
We still need that per-ville fee, though.
Yeah, but we pay a printing fee for every bill, and that module is about $10,000.
The per capita tax is about $10,000, right?
The module.
The programming for that.
Yep.
Two comments, one's just more personal, anything, but the tax collector, although it's only a dollar, they're getting 10% of what the taxpayer's paying, just to process that bill.
Yeah, and they're getting .04% of the real estate bill.
Right.
So they're, yep.
I think I know where my township stands, but just like the school board or anything else, that could change over time, and what happens if these other municipalities don't feel the same way, and they decide, hey, this is $5 we can have, and then they tax the taxpayers in that direction.
Oh, no. So, I mean, so taxpayer, a taxpayer could either see, nope, nope, per capita tax next year, or they could see a $15 one, which currently is, or $10, or $5, depending what the municipality does.
Another thing for the municipalities, you know, we're looking at it on a larger scale, to get to that $70,000. When you take that $30,000 and divide it by, we're just doing it equally, we have five townships, each one gets $6,000, and it costs them $10,000 to get the software, essentially.
Well, $10,000 divided by five.
Yeah. There's not a whole lot left for them to go get, and I think our, our local township probably had the same mindset that we do, it's a lot, a lot of effort for a little return. But at the same time, I do prefer, it is a tax that everyone is supposed to pay, but it does not follow the tenets at all. And I had a personal situation here, an employee of mine had moved, and it went, the tax thing went to his old house, it never followed him when he moved. He updated his address and everything, it went to his old house, got sent there, whatever, got tossed because it wasn't his mail, it wasn't forwarded, and the new person at his old house called and said, there's a post-it on the door that he has a certificate. Yeah. It was literally taped to the door, I have to bet you on it. No fault is, he did everything he was supposed to do, but we didn't know, we couldn't catch it. So how many does that actually happen to? And it probably gives Tom and Mrs. Gardula a bad, bad phone call when they call, we get pissed off.
It eventually goes to collections, and then the employer gets a letter to attach their wages. Happened to you guys that work with Scoopall County, no way ever knew they moved out of the county, and book, next thing you know, the employer gets a letter.
And they legitimately moved and everything they were supposed to do.
They did.
And the nuisance they followed them.
Yeah, the tax collector never knew, nobody's notified them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, the new people moved in, and they get a tax call.
Right.
And won't be built for that year.
Ed might still never be caught, but they're living there, because no one's gonna, nope. So...
I know we're one of the few municipalities that still collect it, like Tilden, they eliminated it when they backed it all this way back when. They don't have per capita tax anymore.
Push down just a little bit to Brian, you said, push down just a little bit there.
Yeah, Windsor Township don't have it either.
So if we approve this, you're not gonna file us on the tax, real estate tax decrease order?
Literally four hours off.
Let's go, let's go push for both.
That's your tax decrease.
Huh?
That's your tax decrease.
I mean, is there anybody here opposed to keeping going down this road to eliminate it?
All four eliminated taxes.
I mean, it's a nuisance because it's, your return is not equated with your cost.
If you want to, you know, look at it this way, that you're, you're gonna be paying more, so you're getting less on the real estate. I mean, if you got $100 a bill, it's a...
Yeah, and by February, we have to set the compensation for tax collectors.
And they're not gonna do it for less.
Yeah, and, and I'll say for the tax collectors...
What, if it stays the same, then they're doing us worse?
I was in my mind trying to add up what it, tax collector's pay.
Well, they usually, usually get the tax, real estate tax, but with the per capita tax.
And obviously, real estate taxes have come down, essentially, values have gone up, so theoretically, your compensation went up with the values.
No, it's all been the same. They've gotten the same amount the last...
Absolutely not.
...four years. It really...
A farm was out here at Bethel and was assessed $100,000.
They get a dollar bill, and I have a $1 million bill or a $100 bill.
Oh, I thought you said they got pushed.
$2 for $2.
That's what it adds up.
No, that's what, that's what it comes down to.
Oh, 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 gotcha, gotcha. Okay, okay, okay. I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
The real estate bill was $1 million, get $2.
Gosh, I thought they were getting .04%.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, yeah, less than half percent of what we collect from the real estate.
And I think the municipalities said how much should pay their tax collectors, because over at Bethel, we lowered it when all the warehouses went in.
They used to get paid a percentage.
Yeah, we lowered the percentage because all the warehouses, all the tax collectors have been sitting real pretty.
No, they went to, for bill basis like we do. So I'll get, I mean, if you want me to pursue, if that we want, I'll move the tax collectors, because they won't include it on it, and the municipalities.
Do you have Tom a recommendation that you're thinking for taxpayer compensation?
Uh, I'll hold on to that for a minute.
I'd wait to see what they're trying to say. I mean, you don't want to overplay your hand.
Right.
For what? And we have to set that?
Yes. Then they have to decide whether they're gonna work for the tax collector. And I'll say, the tax collectors are, they're a great liaison for us. I mean, it's, you know, I support them, they're, they're, they talk to the taxpayers. There are liaisons to the taxpayers, so that, you know, I certainly, the only time I talk to a taxpayer is that they're angry. So, you know, they haven't had a raise in a long time, so I just...
Is there an incentive for them to, like, if, right now it's at 2, if it was higher, is there, is there a thing where we increase the compensation to them, and there's more incentive for them to push and get those taxpayers, do you know what I mean? Like, or is it, they're not, they're gonna do the same job regardless of whether it's 4 or 10?
Yeah, they'll do the same job. They, I mean, there's, our delinquent taxes are very low, comparatively speaking, in my experience. They, you know, they, there's, some districts have 15 taxpayers in that.
So if there's, an average of two adults in a household, and there's 1,000 partials in that area, the tax collector could be looking at a $6,000 net, potentially, in income. And that could sound like they might say, it's not worth it, you're on that, is what you're saying?
Right. So we, we create tax collectors for both, real estate and per capita, total of about $20,000 a year for the last 15 years. It hasn't changed.
That's three, three areas, or three?
Three areas.
No, two. Real estate and per capita, two dollars.
Oh, but that's three different tax collectors.
Two.
Five.
Five different tax collectors.
Five tax collectors, yes. Burnville's relatively small, you know, that's...
Burnville's just like 24 years here.
The rest, Bethel's twice as big as, it's the next biggest one.
What was the number, 20,000?
$20,000, yeah. It's probably about $4,000 for...
I'm used to it.
$4,000 for real estate and $8,000 for per capita, so it's roughly...
And that's... Hello, reasonable.
Yeah, they, they may not run for, for the last split. I just, if we could increase the real estate compensation, but I'd like to talk to them first.
Oh, they'll come back with a proposal.
Yeah.
Great. Moving on to personnel, Mr. Palmer.
5A, this is for next meeting, that we approved the supplemental contract for the following winter coaches as listed there. 5B is the through a several month contract for the following spring coach position, and 5C is the following volunteers for remaining during the 24, 25 school year.
Um, yeah, if we could vote on the con, the volunteers.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approved 5C, that we do the following volunteers for remaining the 24, 25 school year as listed.
Next second, questions or comments? We'll call.
Petrix?
Yes.
Whitler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bax?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
This, this year we started kind of a deep dive into reviewing curriculum and reworking how we write it, just so it's more meaningful and intentional. In that process, this summer, we're going with Mr. Muhammad in the high school. We took a look at his classroom text, it's 15 years old now, a lot of them are falling apart quite a bit, and although psychology has not really changed in 15 years, the textbook that was prior, adopted by the school board, they had an updated version through 2024. I have a copy here for anyone that would want to see it as well. Not a lot of changes in terms of content, the only thing that is really updated in this are some more relevant, kind of current world connections to psychology, specifically with technology and the impact that that can have, which did not exist, at least in the past 15 years ago, when the book was initially adopted. So what I'm requesting is, we got a classroom set, now in our social studies classrooms, the textbook doesn't drive the learning, it supplements the learning, so the entire book, it's not like it's, we're reading that page by page, but it is a resource that is kind of referenced from time to time. So I'd be asking for a classroom set of that, with it comes some teacher resources as well, in terms of quizzes, assessments, some project ideas that could be used. In total, the quote that I got for those textbooks and the student, and the teacher resources was a little over $4,700 for that classroom text. I did look elsewhere outside of the publisher, just to see if we can get that cheaper, but that was the lowest price that I could get directly from a publisher. So the request is just the same text that was prior, adopted by the board, just get a updated version of it, and I'd be glad to see us get updated textbooks for those students to be able to use.
So you talked about rewriting curriculum also?
So what we're doing is not necessarily rewriting and changing it, we're adopting the state framework for curriculum. So the state uses understanding by design, backward design, so starting with, what are your intended outcomes for every course, and then working backwards from there to ensure that everything we do is in alignment. So we are not necessarily changing what we're teaching, we're changing the style of our writing curriculum, so that we can go through a review process that is cyclical and a little bit more regular. Part of this work came out of some of the Senate bills with transparency that are kind of in the fight, being completely transparent with the curriculum and sharing it with households. The way our current curriculum is set up and established, it's not as easy to read, and it's not as easy to follow, or it isn't intentionally designed. So we've actually started this year, some professional learning with all of our staff, to look at what is curriculum, what is its intended purpose, and changing the way we write it. But I want to really emphasize, we're not changing what we're teaching, we're changing how we're kind of packaging it, and making it useful and relevant for our teachers. And then the plan is, two years ago when I came on board, there was a seven-year cycle of curriculum rewrites to bring these regularly to the board for review and updates. But we were, we had a lot of different versions of what curriculum looked like at all grade levels. So a lot of this, too, is just to make it all uniform, make it all look the same, and kind of creating a cohesive backing to it, so that when, in the future, what I envision is a seven-year cycle of, if it's a social studies year, and then following years math, the curriculum blueprint's gonna look the same, so it's not like we're, we're going on to discipline at grade level, it's something drastically different. the curriculum blueprint's going to look the same, so it's not like we're, the bedroom discipline or grade level, it's something drastically different.
So is Mr. Holland the main teacher of this?
Yes.
And this is, I forget what grade he's in.
It's eleven until three primary. It's an elective course. Uh, there's typically about three to four sections of it, it's a semester-based course.
I'd like to see.
Absolutely, I brought it.
It's your library?
Library.
It's actually really happy.
And what paper bill?
So you're saying he, we have curriculum that he chooses out of, and what you're saying is then he uses this as a supplement. So it's kind of the opposite of the way I went to school, like, read, check, here's one degree, tomorrow we're going to talk about all the plus. We don't do that?
We don't go, we don't let the textbook out of the way. We, our teachers set, these chapters on Ecardis, and we find resources in the supplement.
Should we look for us to move on this, or are you just going ahead?
Presenting now, because I knew that, Mike, we finally got a copy, I had Mr. Muhammad review to make sure that it's still in alignment. Um, same textbook, it's just the updated version that we currently have. But I figured that having that available for people to look at and review, if we get board approval this month, great. If we have to wait for the next month because I need more time to review, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I kept that all wrong from the end of the, that I was looking at.
Because within our curriculum budget, which is
All right, we'll go to full report for next meeting.
I mean, I don't know, yeah.
That's just, if he's not All right, administrative reports.
So odd that I had it this year. Um, this week is our spirit week, obviously, which is why I'm dressed like a flag, as is Dennis.
That was just normal.
Uh, today was obviously American Day, red, white, and blue. Um, we will cap this week off with our homecoming games on Friday with a pig roast and the dance on Saturday. We are also, uh, involved right now in our senior recognition of sports. Last night, I attended the, uh, senior recognition for golf and girls soccer. So, um, it's definitely a busy week. Everybody's exciting. The kids are very excited about it. So, um, hope to see you all on Friday.
Mr. Lynch, the junior high.
Good evening, everyone, except Kyle Bass. Little update from the middle school. Um, interventions are gearing up to start this week. Uh, my language arts teachers and math teachers have been diving and digging through a lot of the data to find the discrepancies and areas for students that need just a little extra TLC. Um, so we're looking forward to getting those started actually tomorrow morning. Um, I want to give a shout out to my science teachers, um, Mr. Shiller, Mr. Torkowski, and Mr. Strain. I've walked in and seen kids doing science, and I think it's fantastic. I actually had to explain to a parent in a meeting yesterday when her son was so excited about how he broke a CD case that she didn't owe the district any money, it was part of Mr. Strain's collision lab, looking at how things collide and what the impact is. Um, so just a shout out to him and all the science teachers for, for getting those engaging, um, science lessons and labs underway. And then last but not least, district-wide, I just want to, I know I gave an update, um, semi-recently, our campaign for United Way has concluded, and as a district, um, I'm not sure it would be Mike Leester's record, uh, when he held this position. Um, but, uh, the district raised fifteen thousand four hundred dollars for United Way, uh, that would directly impact our community. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the entire Tulpe family, uh, for pledging all of that money to help those in need. Thank you.
Mrs. Tenny?
So I have been lucky enough to get into a bunch of classrooms recently to see our new math program, IAM, um, and our teachers have been embracing it with open arms, but so have our students. A lot of our students that I still come to, but I ask them what their favorite part of the day is. Um, the typical, you know, answer has always been recess and gym, but now a lot of them actually say that, which is really, really neat. Um, I actually was just talking to a teacher today, and she just gave her first assessment for the unit, and she was like blown away by the scores and the students understanding of the content. Um, so it's really exciting, and I'm excited to see how it transpires throughout the year. Students also participated last Friday in our PTO's move-a-thon. Um, our school and our community raised a total of six thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents that will go towards our school. Um, during the event, we had several staff members come help, and we also had four, um, students from the high school come, and we run several repetitions, um, for the kids to participate in, and the kids were just great, um, from the high school, and our kids had the last gift.
Mr. Years?
I don't know that Mrs. Tenny made herself into a human Sunday.
I did, yeah. Oh, I didn't make myself into it.
The kids made it. Then she got wheeled out of the gym.
I'm not going to attempt to do that this evening. Um, first thing, I hope I don't take any of Mr. Bryce's thunder. So I wanted to give a shout out to our artistic support classroom in general, and especially their teacher, Sierra Edger. It never ceases to amaze me when we have students that are having a really tough time, um, how well they maneuver behavior. And there's such a good example of treating a kid no differently the next day than if there was no behavior involved. Um, so they do a phenomenal job day in and day out, doesn't matter if it's small blips or big blips, those kids are just doted on and loved every single day. It's, it's awesome to see. Um, next thing, as you can all imagine, behavior in the lunchroom can sometimes be tricky. So, uh, I was kicking around some ideas of how to keep kids engaged in the lunchroom because on average, the typical elementary student eats their lunch within six to seven minutes, which gives them roughly twenty-two minutes to get into other things. Um, so we started off with just tabletop board games and cards for kids to play with at lunch. Loved it. Um, we expanded that, um, thanks to facilities for installing a Lego wall that we were able to purchase. We have a reading nook now. Um, the athletes were down from the high school today without prompting, started sitting down, playing games with kids. There was high school kids playing with kids at the Lego wall. Um, we have those really nifty, um, carpets with trains and cars, and the little kids just loved it. Um, as a result, we have not had one student sent to the office this year for behavior problems within the lunchroom. Um, it, it's amazing. Come down at lunch, see it, come get on the floor, play with some cars and trains. I, it's fun to see.
Careful what you wish for.
Got lots of Legos, lots of Legos.
Well, he did steal my pleasure, so.
He's gross.
I have also the opportunity to get to a bunch of classrooms and really support behaviorally, and one of the things I did want to point out was um, just some of our teachers and their, their pure positivity to work with kids, even that are exhibiting some pretty intense or challenging type behaviors. Um, one of our teachers that was actually recognized today, uh, Erin Dietrich, is a prime example of this. Um, been working on the FDA with her and one of the students that she works with, and the entire conversations, every single time I've spoken with her, she has so much positivity and so many positive things to say about a student who they show in some more challenging behaviors. So it's just been really neat to see that positivity in our artistic support room, in our elementary, in our kindergarten classrooms. Um, it's just been really, really, uh, a great breath of fresh air to be in these rooms with such positivity for student success.
Ms. Green?
As Mr. Years kind of alluded to, we had our fall sports day at Bethel today, so that's part of our cafeteria's way of celebrating homecoming. So we had, uh, Mr. Brown brought down a couple of senior athletes to the cafeteria. We offered the kids free ice cream for the day, it's kind of like a celebratory, celebrating the fall season. Um, and I actually asked Mr. Forman, the art teacher, if he could have the students make signs to kind of welcome the, welcome the athletes, and he really went above and beyond. He ended up making a contest out of it. He had a huge display with each grade, he had a big K, one, two. And then the kids had their, their posters welcoming, welcoming the athletes. Over at Bethel, I let the athletes actually go and choose the winners. They had these little ribbons that they put up, and I think they could really, really tie it. Um, there are photos of that on Facebook, if you want to check them out, I just posted those today. Coming up on October twenty-fifth, which is a Friday, we're going to do, we're going to participate in the statewide Pennsylvania PA preferred day, they call it. So we can choose any day in October to kind of feature locally grown items, things that are PA preferred. Um, so we are going to bring in some local ground beef and make homemade meatballs. And when I say we, I mean me. I, I told Rachel, I said, we can do this, and I will come in and I will make the meatballs. And she's like, okay. Um, but we're going to do, uh, homemade meatballs, uh, with sauce and, um, Texas toast. Fun fact, my kids let me make Texas toast up. I serve Texas toast to them, and they're like, what is that? Texas toast, I'm going to love it. Um, so that's October twenty-fifth. We're also inviting a couple local orchards, um, possibly farmers in to have tables in the cafeteria, interior, do tastings, possibly like apple tastings, apple cider, things like that. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that we did, um, order the RISE gardens for the cafeterias at the elementary school. So that's part of that Farmer's School Institute grant that we received. So the RISE garden is going to be like a three-tiered garden, um, I'm not sure if it's aquaponic, hydroponic, I'm still learning about this, but Brianna White said that elementary's is involved. Um, and we ordered them, they're going to be lit up, they're going to be right in the cafeterias because we get to see the food growing, and then we'll harvest it, and we'll send it to them in the
Phil wants to know if you can do a whole mouth tasting. All right, have they got any?
Yeah, I, I know we can talk about the board personnel and whatever the negotiations and as a board, um, about attendance incentives for our staff. Um, I would really like us to look into that and try to, because I think the more that people miss, the less education they get. So if we can do some kind of attendance, well, some kind of attendance incentive for our staff, um, for perfect attendance, for a perfect order, or however good. I'd really like us to pursue that, yeah.
What we could do is give, we'll give a couple of different options.
I think the letter gets sent out for the whole mouth incentive.
Um, this resolution was attached to the email fund. Somewhere I saw that.
We did, I did put it in, I have it, um,
We have all the facility, yeah.
Some are.
It'll go on the approval for the October fifteenth.
So I was at the sports stadium yesterday, and I'd seen the water notice, and it kind of refreshed my mind about the DEP firm or the etymology we're at with that map. Um, so we two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, we had given DEP comments back, um, and we're waiting for them to either get back to us with the technical permit that were approved, and then we can do the work for more comments. So he did reply last week, uh, but he actually asked for another piece of information. Um, so I'm not sure where we're at, we're waiting for DEP at this point. Um, I feel like it's close because he just asked for one little piece. So as soon as they get the technical review, um, they have most of the pieces that they need to redo our water filtration system, and they'll do that after hours. So we, once that gets installed, cleared and everything, DEP inspected, we should be off and running. It's just waiting for that technical review.
What else?
Did you have the roaster secured for Friday?
The roaster is going to arrive at my house tomorrow evening. It's a goofy one seventy-eight inch ball, a little tiny ball to move the thing, and Manny's going to leave me his drawbar, the ball on it. He's going to drop it in my place, so I'll have it, and then we'll get it to
I hope it's all coming in help.
Somebody needs to help cook because I don't know that I can go till the next morning.
You should talk to him though. What was the difference, sorry? That's the problem, that's why we're in this boat. So thank you for good on our roaster, and I, I cashed my check.
And, and the pigs are picking up Thursday evening from following, I guess, are already being contacted.
Any new business?
I have a question. Um, so over the weekend, we were visiting some family in the Okunos, and somehow conversations about, brought up about free, free school lunches. And in the school that they go to, they get free breakfast and free lunch. And I was like, oh, well, is that like for financial stuff, like? And she's like, no, because I qualify for that. She said that every school in Pennsylvania has the ability to apply for free lunch. And she said usually their school does it in July. So is that something that we can do for next year? She said it's been since COVID. And I know a couple of years, we got free breakfast and free lunch, um, but now we have to pay for lunch. So if that's a program, can we apply for it? Because I think it would be beneficial to a lot of families if they get free lunch.
So there is, so there is a, so it used to be that you have to meet a certain threshold for, for community schools or community lunches where it's a certain level of power. So Redding always qualified, Bethel, I'm Allen Towns, some of the bigger school districts. Two just January ago, last January, they came out with a program that you can apply. So we did look into it. Um, the level of funding that you get reimbursed for each meal would severely cripple our cafeteria. And that's, that's what the issue is. Like, we, we, in looking at that, Tom might be able to speak more, it, it would cause us to have deficits um, in, in, so the amount that they reimburse to you for per meal does not equate to the cost that it costs to actually produce that meal, if that makes sense.
So there's a calculation that, uh, a break-even point, and it will be significantly, was a significant loss for us. Um, now, I don't know, Joe, if you, we did the calculation, I don't know. But if the board could choose to fund it, then you would have a complete upside-down cafeteria. You would be funding the cafeteria with general fund money every year, which
Is there money in the budget for that? Is that a possibility?
Not, not going, not sustainable for, for numerous years, maybe for two years, it would do, it would do it, but I don't know if you can go back after that.
I think you could, but I think families, that would be a part of, yeah, there's a few ways. Called CEV, Community Eligibility Provision?
Yeah. And this year is a little bit different. If you, if you were qualified for reduced meals, your lunch is free. But it's still a process of applying the whole thing, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to inquire because I know that there are some families who don't make a lot of money, but they don't qualify for the free lunch. And this area is in the Okunos, it's Stroudsburg, like east Stroudsburg, and I'm like, they're pretty rich. So I didn't know how they could get it, and it wasn't something that we were inquiring about, we're doing for our students.
Taxes, like the taxpayers probably don't pay.
Yeah.
Their board probably approved, just given free lunch or whatever.
Could we see some figures on that, what it would cost us?
The reservation I would have with that is there's really no skin in the game for the student, per se. And I don't mean this negatively, but, you know, hey, I'm not hungry. I still take the lunch, I'm still right in the trash. I mean, and I would I'm not there often, um, but the times I was there, I look in the trash. I mean, there's nothing to melt, just throw them away, don't try it.
Don't we have a share bin?
Yeah.
I guess
They still go in the trash, you know what I mean? But still, the kids still put them in the trash.
My concern with it is I look at it like we already burdened the taxpayers with funding the school, and I get all of that.
the school, and I get all of that. Now we're going to ask taxpayers who have no children to possibly pay more to, like, I don't want to sound rude, but like you have children, you got.
Yeah. I guess I was under the impression that this money was coming from like, I don't know where.
It could be that, that their school has high previous, I'm not sure where Strasburg is, is it Strasburg, Strasburg, or?
Well, I think.
I know a bunch of them up there in Monroe County did apply for the program. So there is incentives, as your poverty level increases, there is, there is a break, like Allen, like Redding, Allen Town, inner-city schools, there is an incentive for them to do those programs.
They get, they get a higher rate of.
Just reverse it.
Yeah, so we were, we actually were excited when it came out, and we thought, hey, this is great, it would allow us to continue. And then when we looked into the incentive, it's nowhere near what they would, where the threshold would be, and we can pull those numbers, but there's.
My cousin was like, very much.
You can't use that to supplement. So you can, so we, we would have to find out, so we couldn't.
Two ninety. Two ninety, oh.
You can't.
Oh, yes, two ninety, and they pay almost five bucks.
They reimburse a certain percent, like a certain percent of that, yeah, like, I don't want to quote numbers, I forget, because we, we did talk about.
I guess my opinion is the cafeteria setup is a standalone entity, and I think it should be able to stand on its own, without us funding it through the federal fund. I mean, it's set up that way, and it's, they kind of account for it that way through accounting, but we really applaud it, and I think it should stay that way. I'm just looking at all the revenue we get from the warehouses and all the money we spend everywhere else. We throw $750,000 at the kissing property, you know, that could have went to fund kids' lunches. I just think there's a way to rearrange where the funds are dispersed, that this could possibly be a possibility. I know everybody has different ideas, but there's cuts that could be made here and there, like I said, it's just where you spend your money. Because I see wasteful spending that I think's wasteful, but I don't sit in different positions where people think this is justified, so. I'll tell you what grocery store food costs are today, we can playground a little bit at home, it's either break-even or actually a little bit cheaper to buy the school, and so it is actually the accurate, and what's due.
Yeah, each year, Tom and I look at the, look at the lunch prices, and we look at all the districts raising, 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 hoping we're able to be profitable every year, and therefore we do not increase the lunch prices and pass that on to our families. Because I mean, if you look at Hamburg's lunch prices, our neighboring district's significantly higher.
And the other thing is, if we have excess money, we decrease taxes. I mean, this is one of the other. So if we're, we're giving, if we decrease taxes for the last eight years over two mils, that's more than, should be, I don't know, it's more than a pay for lunch, we pay for some of it.
Yeah, it was just something that we talked about, and I was just curious as to like, what, like, yeah, we definitely looked at it and considered it, but felt like it wasn't the right choice for our district, but I'm like, I thought it more.
There is a, there is a bill gaining some traction in the state legislature about expanding the breakfast program. I was trying to find the email that we just got the other day.
Yeah, I read.
But they are, there is a growing group of representatives and senators that would like to see it go through. So I would think, the way the article read, it was more or less, this is coming at some point, not, you know, this is just.
Tax payers still pay for it.
Yes.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, you're going to pay.
There's no such thing as free.
That's what I was just going to say, there is nothing for free.
I understand.
They would like you to eat otherwise.
All right, anything else, some comments or business? Anyone wish to address the board this evening?
I just have two questions. My granddaughter asked me to help her, so I'm asking you guys to help my granddaughter. She gets pulled out, and she gets pulled out during her core subjects, and then she's expected to know the material that she has not been, had the direct instruction for. I know these, these two items that I have have been addressed in the past. I know that things can be done, but I'm just asking you guys and Mr. Gears to make sure that when kids, when students are pulled out, that they're not pulled out during those core subjects and then expected to know the material that they did not have that direct instruction for. The other thing, too, that makes her very uncomfortable is the fact that she gets pulled out, she's by herself with a man in a, in a closed room, and she doesn't like that. I know her parents have, have brought this up in the past, and it's for the district's protection as well, as for any student that's in that situation. So I'm hoping that you guys can come up with something that benefits the children and protects the district and protects the children, and so she's not uncomfortable being in a room with a man that she doesn't want to be there. That also interferes with her learning productivity at that particular time, because she is uncomfortable and she doesn't want to be there. And I'm not saying that, that the gentleman is doing anything wrong, it's just she doesn't want that, and it makes her very uncomfortable. And the expectation, too, to know material while she's pulled out, that, you know, she's given, she's given a worksheet that they did in class together, and she's expected to do it, you know, for homework or something like that. I did give recommendations to the parents as far as how to deal with that particular thing, but something needs to be done that these kids, if there's opposite sex, you know, teacher and student, you can't do that, or you shouldn't be. Like I said, it's for your protection as well as the children.
Anything else? Why is behind there, Tom, beautiful asleep? Calendar events is listed there. Homecoming week. Halloween dance listed, crazy time to fly, and the first floor list. But no requests are listed there. We will be having executive session for personnel after the meeting. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Next second.
All those in favor, if it's up, say no. I oppose no. Motion carries, we need a adjourn.